Okay, um, I let me just pull up the agenda. I suspect that the only other thing is updates, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Ryan?
And so, yeah, let's bring Ryan on. We'll start with COVID updates. And, uh, Ryan has been a busy guy. So, Ryan, I know there's a bunch of things going on. So, uh, let's let me hand it off to you and, uh, let you update the board. I might have some things to add to this.
Sure. Um, thank you supervisor. The, uh, probably the biggest, uh, two updates to get out to everybody are the, um, the two age changes that have occurred, um, expanding vaccine eligibility. So as of this past, uh, Tuesday this week, um, on the 30th, uh, ages 30 and above, um, became eligible for vaccination. As of next week on Tuesday, April 6th, the age for eligibility actually drops to 16 and over. Um, so those are the, those are the two biggest changes. Really outside of that, it's, um, every, all the rest of the guidance is fairly, you know, the same as what it was the last time. Numbers, um, have, are, are down from where they were, but they're still kind of holding at, at a plateaued level right now. We're hoping we see, you know, that fall off and vaccination rollout continues to on, um. The Southampton College site is, is still operational. Obviously, we expect that that'll be operational for, for quite some time. The site there right now is still at about, you know, 600 people per day roughly. Um, but the, the folks that came in on day one of that site being operational will be coming in soon for shot two. So that site will continue to deliver first shots when, while simultaneously giving second shots. So the volume at that site is going to go from, you know, about 185, 600 people to somewhere around 1170 or, you know, 1,200 people. So we're going to see a lot more activity at that site very soon with both first and second doses being administered to, uh, recipients there. And the hospital is still continuing on with some other small, uh, distribution locations throughout the township as well as over in East Hampton. And today we have about 1,300 people going into the, uh, the Greek church for second doses of Pfizer. They had been there 21 days ago. Um, and again, this is predominantly our, our 60 plus population, I want to say, because the day that these people went in for their first dose was the day that it changed from 65 to 60. So it's mostly 65 and over that are going in today for their second dose, but some 60 and overs, um, at the Greek church. That's the, the last of the big, more than thousand person, um, pods that occurred at that location. Um, but we do still have some small stuff out there. The county has informed us that through the Office of the Aging, um, they're working with folks that are, um, homebound seniors, uh, to try and get them vaccinated, uh, with, uh, J and J shots. And, um, there are, you know, we're continuing to work with our businesses and particularly our arts and entertainment folks, um, to go through this process of trying to, you know, restore some programming and reopening and do so in a, in a safe and compliant way with the guidance. So I thi- I think that's kind of just a summary of everything that we have going on right now. Again, the big things are the age shift. Right now, if you're 30 and over, you're eligible. If you're 16 and over, I believe you actually can make appointments already. And beginning next Tuesday, you can get a shot if you're 16 and over. Um, so as long as your appointment date is out beyond, I, I think you can, but that'll be determined when you try and go on to the MI eligible app. Uh, it, it's, it's got an algorithm built into it that if you don't meet the age requirements, it's not going to take it. Uh, but it's, it's worth the shot to see if, uh, you can, you can make the appointment now as long as it's after the 6th of April, um, in terms of the eligibility date.
I have a quick question. Um, you mentioned seniors. I'm just wondering between the town and/or the county and the state, have we accounted for how many that have been vaccinated? I know that they're starting on the homebound people, but is there any idea about how, how great we're doing with vacci- vaccinating that population and, um, the other vulnerable population or we don't know?
We haven't really gotten a, a good like demographic breakdown, um, from the county or state yet in terms of, you know, where in the population the numbers fall out of the number of people that have been vaccinated. And we don't really get good drill down data into, you know, out of the county total, how much of that is in Southampton? Um, so we're, we're soliciting that information, trying to get it, uh, to see if we can get just a little bit better information on it. Obviously up until probably about a week ago or so, the majority of people vaccinated, you know, had to meet either the, um, the, the employment criteria or the age criteria. So I, I, I don't have a hard answer for you on one yet, but we're trying to see if we can get a little bit better of a handle on the data. I, I will say, you know, we definitely made a big push locally, um, for, for those numbers to, to, you know, get strong in terms of the number of people that fell into that bracket. Um, I mean, just the two, two, uh, doses at the Greek church alone. And then there were a couple of small, you know, three, 400 ones that were mixed in there as well. You know, we, we know at the very least, we had, you know, several thousand people that were taken care of out of that age bracket. I'll see if I can get better, you know, numbers for you on it though, for sure.
Other questions for Ryan? So Ryan, the issue, one, you know, one person brought up an issue. I think it's resolved by the fact that younger people can now get vaccinated, but this had to do with seasonal employees, um, in restaurants, because there was a, um, a preference. The, the, the criteria, they met the criteria. If you're working in a restaurant, you could get vaccinated. But, uh, they were turning away people who were going to be working in restaurants in a couple of weeks, um, who were trying to get vaccinated and get the immunity prior to starting work because they weren't currently, you know, vaccinated. But, uh, yeah.
Hopefully that was not terribly widespread that that was occurring. But yes, you and I were both made aware of one particular, uh, incident where somebody brought a letter with them from their future employer, the one that was bringing them on for the season and, uh, and was turned away at the state site, um, because they weren't currently working for that employer. Um, we have worked with, uh, the rep from the governor's office in the meantime though, and they, that should not have happened. That person is being rescheduled. Um, so yes, we've, I, I squared that one away yesterday. I, I believe they should be getting contacted soon to, for a rescheduled appointment. It, it's kind of a moot point at this time, because like you just mentioned, the age is falling down to the 16 and over as of next week. So the employment criteria won't really matter so much anymore. You won't have to fit into a certain job category in order to get the vaccine. It'll just be everybody 16 and over will be eligible as of next Tuesday. But unfortunately, we are aware of, of one person getting caught in the crossfire i- in the meantime. And I think we've rectified that situation, uh, for, for the individual.
I think it does, maybe does matter because once the eligibility criteria go to, you know, anyone basically down to 16 years old or whatever, um, it, it may be hard again to get appointments. So if we can get.
Well, we've also, yeah, we've also asked the state about trying to, um, run some additional pass, you know, targeting, uh, populations and targeting groups of individuals that fall into that category so that they're not put into a position where they have to start the job that would be, you know, like put them into like a higher risk almost before they can get the vaccine. Hopefully we can get them, get their hands on the vaccine before they start, so that they've already achieved a level of immunity before they're put into the, the, the quote unquote risk situation. So, um, we're working on that one too.
All right, good. Um, our senior centers. I mean, I, I did just extend the general emergency order till mid-April. Um, you know, I, I think seniors do need to, you know, be together. We're still delivering meals. Um, a number of them are doubly vaccinated now. They have that, you know, full immunity. Um, can't we figure out a way to start bringing them together for social activities and meals? And particularly those who are fully vaccinated?
Yeah. So, so I, I, in fact, your timing is perfect because, um, Liz Wire reached out yesterday and we had had some, some short conversations about this over the last couple of weeks anyway. And, um, we're, we're going to take a hard look at reestablishing, uh, some of the in-person services for some of our seniors. Uh, now that more of them have been, uh, vaccinated, um, I, I, May is, is Older Americans Month. And so, uh, if we have these conversations starting now and, and prepare, I think in line with a celebration of, you know, Older Americans Month, we hopefully can reestablish some of our services and, and have some more in-person availability beginning very soon.
All right, good. Um, yeah, I'd like to see that happen. Um, other COVID questions? For Ryan? Um, special events? Um, I know we're forwarding things to the state. Are we hearing back from the state?
We were. Uh, we, we, we're, we're working on our, our first event that we had sent to them. Um, we had decent dialogue going for like a week, week and a half there. And since the last updated information that we sent them on, on or about the 24th or 25th, we have not heard anything back. So, uh, actually, yeah, it, it would have been right around Wednesday, the 24th, I believe. So we're, um, we, I reached out again yesterday to see if we can get some more information. But we've been having a lot of internal dialogues regarding special events and trying to make sure that the folks that are applying are being, you know, guided into the process as best that we can. Unfortunately, right now, the way we have to push things forward, we have to push it forward with the application being based on the current guidance. You might want to forecast out, you know, two month your event and say, all right, I, I think by that point I should be able to have this many people. Well, it's great to be optimistic, but the current guidance is what the applications are being judged on. So we need, when people submit, you need to submit based on the current guidance. And then what we can always do is if it gets approved based on that and your plan is good based, and, and the guidance changes after the fact and increases the numbers of participants or things of that nature, that's easy. Then we can just say, okay, you were approved at, you know, 200 people, but now the guidance is up to 500. You can move your event up to 500 people if you have that many attendees that you're interested in or participants that you're interested in having, as long as you can safety criteria, um, and your plan stays, you know, the same as it, as it was. So it's easy, but we just need folks to understand that the guidance is what it is right now. And that's what you have to adhere to and apply based on. And more favorable way for your event, we can adjust accordingly as we get closer to time.
Ryan, would you automatically adjust that or would they have to come back and resubmit and, and amendment to their papers?
I, 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 you know, Sunday, I, I think that we would probably just have to have a dialogue with the, uh, the applicant at that point. Because if they, some applicants are probably going to be comfortable with adjusting up, you know, if the number goes up or whatever. And other applicants out of an abundance of caution for safety preservation onsite and everything with sorts of COVID, might say, you know what, I, I'm good with my event at, you know, uh, no more than 100 people at a time or whatever it is. And I, I want to stay there. I feel that this is a controlled area that I can handle. So I think it's probably just going to be a dialogue with the applicant. We're not probably just going to, because it's an application that they have submitted, we're not just going to change the numbers on them and, and make that number go up. They're going to have to agree to that in some way, shape or form, or make that request so that we have it formalized. Because it's a, it's a formal application that they've submitted and it's, and it's a legal. Have to make sure that this is a request from them and something they desire. We won't just automatically change it.
Yeah.
And Julie, in my discussions with them, with the applicants, because we have people queuing up right now that we're, we're trying to gather the, um, information that, that, um, Brian requires to then do his review as well, uh, prior to it, it moving on to the state. Um, but we've had those discussions that Ryan could, you know, reevaluate the permit according to the current guidance at that time if they wanted to raise the level. So at that point, they understand when they're coming into the application process that they need to be watching the guidance. And if it's something that they want to have adjusted, then they will come back. Their, their knowledge, you know, we're telling them all in the beginning of the application process that that's, um, a possibility for them.
And I think that's probably the best practice too, to have them make that request. Because at a certain point, different numbers of people kick in, different types of reviews. And they may be kicked from one type of review to another, and there may be additional costs added for that, whether it's for the police or whatever, you know, whatever they fall under, whatever numbers they fall under.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that. We have lots of our fireman carnivals that I, I know they're starting to plan for. Um, so I just want to make sure that they need to know that when those numbers go up, that they should contact us.
But first they need to apply as well. They need to be in the, in the queue in order to have consideration. And, and many of them are, trust me. So, um, the carnival part is, some of the carnival parts as far as rides and such are going to be a little complicated as Ryan could speak to in regards to the sanit- you know, the sanitizing and such. But we're, it's, it's every day seems to bring something different for us to consider as Ryan will attest to.
Yeah.
We have, Ryan, are we seeing any of the bigger events applying, um, or Sunday, like the Hampton Classic? Or the big art shows and the marathons, half marathons?
We have a, we have one marathon, but right now they're, Ryan and I have spent quite a bit of time together recently, um, going over the guidance and how to approach some of these and where do they fit? Because honestly, the guidance isn't very clear and specific when you drill down to the types of events that apply in the town of Southampton, such as a marathon. We were looking at a marathon the other day and it doesn't clearly fit in any one specific category. Even if you look on the state on sports and recreation and it, it, there's nowhere does it even mention a marathon. So we used the guidance that we felt was closest and most appropriate, and those numbers are fairly low. Um, I, it's 200 for outdoors that we're working with right now that, um, Ryan has, um, you know, approved for those types of events. But we haven't heard from the Hampton Classic as of yet. But, um, there's, there's, we're encouraging everyone to understand, you know, we have one of the outdoor movie events that took place last year. Um, and they're all looking back to their applications from last year, which didn't require this state review. So we're urging them to please respect the 90-day guidelines in the, uh, that's in the event process now, um, to allow us time to make sure that their application is complete, that Ryan can do his review and then get it to the state so he can have that back and forth, um, with them. Because it's not, we have no control over that. And that's, um, you know, it's an unknown right now about how long that's actually going to take to get through that process and then be able to have the local control that we were just speaking about. So, um, no, not, not art shows and we haven't seen any of those ju- as of yet. They're mostly fire departments and, um, marathon and one of the drive-in movies. But, um, everybody's trying to figure out how to do this manageably and not everybody wants to have time slots. Um, some of them are welcoming that so that they can fit the numbers in and try and get to where they want to be with their fundraising. Um, you know, have it tend to, uh, 2:30 to four, you know, do time slots of numbers of people so that it adds up to where they actually want to get to with their fundraising. But not all of our events are structured like that, like a, a fire department carnival. They don't want to sell tickets for a two-hour timeframe. Usually it's an event that goes on and they want to be there for the entirety. So there's structures and, and they may work for some of our local organizations or they're, they're a little discouraged by the whole process. Quite frankly, right now, they're, they're having a tough time with COVID plans and, and other things that we're trying to help them with. But it's, it's, you know, this is throwing a real wrench into things and it's, it's been a bit cumbersome for everyone.
It's a pandemic, you know? Doesn't happen very. Thank God. All right. Uh, anything else? Um, you know, there, there was, it's not really a COVID issue. I mean, it's related to COVID. Uh, so it's, but it's not really a Ryan issue, you know, where, uh, you know, and it does relate a little bit to all these special events, but, um, we need more seasonal police officers and the county isn't running the seasonal, uh, officers academy. So I, I did reach out to the county executive because we're going to end up having to staff these special events with, uh, full-time cops, which is really expensive if they don't run this academy. And all the east end departments with their own, uh, east end, you know, towns and villages that have police departments are all facing the same problem. So we're trying to get the county to run this part-time academy. I don't know if it's going to happen, but, uh, I can have Janice forward you the letter I wrote to the county executive so you can see it. But it is a concern that Chief Skrenicki, uh, has, had brought to me and, uh, we're, we're going to try. If not, it's going to, it's going to be a problem. So, uh, you know, we've hired some of our seasonal employees as full-timers and it's just, there's just not a lot out there of, in the pool to fill up all those seasonal spots. And, uh, I'll keep you posted, but it, it is an issue. I guess it's, I'm not sure if it's a COVID reason why the county suspended the academy? Or a financial reason they suspended the academy, but either way, we really need them to bring it back. All right, um.
It's definitely something for the applicants to keep in mind though, because yet, yet one more reason why they need to get their, their stuff in early. Because with, with that challenge that we face, the costs might be a little bit different here. And, and they may have to really exact and say whether or not it's cost prohibitive at different points for them to do this based on the shortage that we're experiencing in the, the seasonal police officers that, that's going to, it's going to raise some of those numbers up a little bit more.
Yeah, we, we often waive those costs. We're going to have to really think if we can afford to do that. It's going to get very expensive.
It's going to be a challenge.
You know, luckily, and maybe that's not the right word, luckily, but you know, there are going to be less of these types of events because of COVID and because of all the rules. So I think a lot of events that would have happened this year won't. Um, people will decide not to have them. So, uh, that might be, uh, you know, maybe we won't need as many seasonal officers. All right. Anything else on COVID? I got, uh, one other thing I wanted to discuss with the board. So, um, I'm sure that you guys all heard in the news that New York State has legalized recreational marijuana. Um, and they, I think the governor has now signed the bill, uh, both houses passed it. And, uh, there are, are a bunch of different things. There, I mean, you're not going to be seeing it for a while in terms of sales in places where you can use, uh, marijuana legally, like the way you do, uh, with alcohol. Place, there are places that sell alcohol. There's places where you can gather with people to consume alcohol, like a bar or nightclub. Um, there'll be something similar. Um, there, uh, there's a bunch of things in it though. Uh, we do actually have something we have to do at the local level. And a lot of this legislation relates to the local level. So, um, there is a, a, a revenue sharing that occurs with the local level. So, uh, there is a, a tax, it's a total of 13% tax, uh, 9%, a 9% tax goes to New York State and a, uh, there's a 4% local tax, 1% county, 3% town. Unless it's in the village and then I'll get to that in a second in terms of what happens to that, that revenue. But now the tax only applies if marijuana is allowed to be sold and consumed, um, in these, um, marijuana bars or parlors, whatever. In terms of being able to possess marijuana, that will be legal up to certain quantities, whether we allow it to be sold or not. People will be able to buy it in a place where it is sold and, and bring it here legally, um, and use it legally. So that, that is not the question. Um, so the question then, um, you know, we, is if we're going to allow it to be sold, then we have to sort of say where, how, you know, what, what are the conditions? Of course, there's New York State licensing involved, like with the liquor license. And those details haven't been developed, but, um, what zoning districts and things like that? So for the, for the dispensaries, where are the places that you could buy? And then, um, these, uh, marijuana bars, whatever you want to call them, parlors, um, where those might be able to be located. We do have the ability as a town to, um, opt out. There's a couple of ways that that can happen. Um, the town board can pass a resolution saying, uh, we don't want the dispensary, places where people can buy it in the community or, or places where people can gather to use it. Um, we can do that by town board resolution. It, it's a permissive. So if somebody gathers enough signatures, it can force it onto the ballot. Um, the town board can also, on its own, just go ahead and skip the permissive part, go right to the ballot and say, we want to give the public the opportunity to decide whether, uh, it should be available for sale. We don't obviously control the villages. So if the town were to say, you know, we're not going to allow it to be sold, it doesn't prohibit the villages from saying it will be sold. Uh, we certainly don't control the Shinnecock, uh, reservation. My understanding is they do intend to, uh, Sunday, I'm sorry, when you moved it, it was very loud. That's why I stopped.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, we do, uh, the Shinnecock Nation, I, I believe is planning on, of having it available for sale there. Um, so, you know, it likely within the town of Southampton will be available. So, um, we haven't discussed this as, as a board. We obviously have a decision to make. Um, we have time. I think we, we have until I believe the end of the year to opt out. Um, if we don't take any action, then we're, you know, we're automatically in. There is a provision, if you opt out, that you can i- in the next year opt in. So you can, you can go, you can rescind the opt-out basically. So that's, that's basically it. I, I know you guys probably have questions. We can always discuss this at a later date. I'll, I'll forward you, um, the information that I've got, including the, um, including the legislation itself. It's a lengthy piece of legislation. So, um, if, I'll, I'll mention this to, if the town doesn't opt out, um, and the village also doesn't opt out, um, any marijuana sold within that village, the, the tax, that 3% gets split between the town and the village, unless you agree otherwise. So you could agree to give the village a higher percentage or whatever, whatever gets negotiated. But in the absence of an agreement, it's a 50/50 split. So, uh, does anybody have any questions at this juncture?
Not a question, but I, I just want to research the bill and, and our possibilities and, you know, go from there. I know we are going to be discussing this.
Yeah, and I have a call with the other supervisors, Suffolk County supervisors coming up. I don't know if it's today, uh, tomorrow, it's being set up, so.
Can the county opt out and kind of preempt all the, uh, local governments from participating?
No, uh, you know, originally it was going to be at a county, at the county level. Um, I think a number of the counties, including Nassau and Suffolk, were threatening to opt out, which was going to deprive New York State of a lot of potential revenue. Um, and so the legislature went a different route and gave it to the towns. Now, it's interesting because giving it to the towns, initially I thought that, well, why, you know, if the county's getting all the sales tax, what's in it for the towns on a financial level to, to allow for the sale? But they actually gave the sales tax to the towns too. So they're sort of using that, I guess, a little bit as an enticement. Though, you know, though it, and it could be a significant amount of money. I don't think it should be the, um, the driving reason, obviously. I think we really just need to look at all the social impacts and listen to various entities and, and make a decision. Uh, I'll have Len do an estimation in terms of if we don't opt out. don't opt out, if we remain in, um, what that might mean financially to the town. And then we could also decide if we want to earmark that for certain, you know, public safety type of uses or social uses. But, uh, but, um, that's if we're, if we're in. If we're out, obviously, then we don't have the revenues. That would be one concern of mine is if we're not in and it is still available in villages or in, it's still available, let's say, at the Shinnecock Reservation, that you know, there'll still be just as much sales and just as much uses without the town, you know, seeing any of the revenue. And, and it might also create traffic problems if it's so limited, if there's only one place that you could purchase it at. If we do allow it, you know, we can work with the planning department and setting the standards, you know? Distance is, you know, do we want it only available in industrial zones? Uh, do we want to increase the setbacks to schools and things like that? We, we get to, to regulate it at the local level in terms of, uh, you know, where these things might be located.
In, in any conversation, I would love to have some of the substance abuse numbers and all that stuff included in the conversation, just not the tax issue. And I know that in Oregon, I believe, uh, when they passed their law, um, part of the funds from that tax revenue was supposed to go to substance abuse programs, but only it's found that only a very small portion has. Um, so I'm just wondering, is there some determination where that revenue has to go or just whatever we want to do with it?
Well, I think there's regulations in terms of where the state money will go. They're 9%. Um, our money is for, and I haven't read the, the bill. I've only read a summary of the bill. It, it doesn't say how we have to spend the money. But we could, by our own local law, say, okay, we want whatever, half the money to go toward, you know, mental health counseling and another half, whatever it is, you know, we, we could create our own, um, framework for how that money should be spent.
I, I just, I think it's ironic that y- you get a tax revenue on a drug and you spend it on substance abuse problems. That's just me.
That's what they're supposed to do with the tobacco mo tax too, right? Yeah, and I, I wish there was something like that with, uh, alcohol consumption, where there was a, a tax that could be used to address, uh, alcoholism. Right, it would help. So, right, but we could, we could, we could decide, you know, if you want the money to go towards sidewalks, if you want the money to go toward daycare. I mean, we, we could sort of say this is a new revenue source and we want a certain percentage to go in a certain direction. That's, that's something we could do. Uh, any, anyone else? And, you know, there are a lot of opinions on this, right? There's a lot of opinions. There uh, people who feel very strongly in both directions. I've seen surveys, public surveys on this, uh, you know, where it has, where recreational marijuana has been put on the ballot. Um, I don't know of an instance where it hasn't passed. I, I've seen the polling for Long Island, it's like two to one in favor of it. But I know, you know, our police chief has very serious concerns about it. I know that the opioid addiction and recovery committee, um, has very serious concerns about it. So, uh, you know, we need, you know, we need to decide, do we want to let the public decide or do we want to decide? Uh, um, I would, I personally think if we're going to opt out, it should be by public vote, not just simply by town board vote, um, because it is a consequential decision. Um, a, a, a big decision and we have the ability to put it on the ballot. So if we're going to go that route, I'd say go on the ballot, if, if the board is inclined toward opting out. Um, but we don't have to decide anything today. I think the, the best thing to do is to review everything. And, uh, you know, it sounds like from what Julie's saying, that maybe we ought to, I would, you know, you, you know, you want some of that substance abuse data and things like that. I don't know whether we should set up a committee to, uh, to advise on this issue or whether we want to keep it at the town board level. I, I think we should keep it on the town board level. I'm happy to do a work.
We just, we just brought it up. I, I mean, there's a lot to, to look into on this issue. Fortunately, there are a number of states that, that have legalized marijuana and, and so there's, there's data out there that, that certainly needs to, to be considered. Um, I wouldn't want to make any decisions on things right now. In fact, one of our board members isn't, isn't present. So, you know, let's.
Okay, so I just wanted you guys to all be aware, which I know that you are, and, uh, I'll make sure that you all have a copy of the bill. All right? All right, um, a-any other updates?
Uh, just, yeah, I have, go ahead, Julie.
Okay, I'll go first. Um, I just want to let every, I would like to let everybody know that April 5th through 12th is International Dark Sky Week. Um, and we hope that everybody will go out, well, turn off your lights, go outside and look at the beautiful stars. And at our next board meeting, we're going to have a memorializing resolution, um, for Dark Skies Week, although it's after Dark Skies Week, so that's why I wanted to mention it today. So please try to remember to turn off your lights and go look at the beautiful stars, planets and asteroids.
That's right. Julie? Tom, John?
I know the villages at Sag Harbor is looking at our code as far as, uh, dark skies is con, are concerned. Um, it's good. And, uh, but, uh, something, uh, that I had, uh, supervisor, you brought up the Bridgehampton Historic District that is going before the CAC in Bridgehampton on April 26th. Um, if, if, I, I know that three of us can't be at that meeting, but if, uh, one other board member or the supervisor, if you want to attend, it's a, it, it should be a good presentation by our town historian, Julie Green, and, uh, that meeting is at 4 o'clock.
So just a reminder, uh, the Great East End cleanup is in May this year. It's May 15th and 16th. Uh, you know, we want to build on the 500 people and volunteers and the, you know, 22 tons of garbage we picked up last year. So if you go on the website and sign up for that, um, you know, hopefully we'll have a wonderful weekend and we'll get a lot of crews together. We'll do it an awesome job that has been done for many years in the town. And also a reminder on your beach permits, uh, you know, you are doing that online this year. I filed mine on a Thursday and I had my permit the following Wednesday. So now's the time to get it before the rush and Kristin and the town of Southampton's Parks and Rec has done a wonderful job with that. So congratulations on that.
One more COVID-related thing, um, we're going back to 100% on April 5th in terms of town employees um, at, at their, uh, office locations. So we had, uh, been at 50% for a while, really a, at the discretion of the department head. So a, a lot of departments were already at 100% or approaching 100%. But now, uh, as of April 5th, which is just five days a-away from, from now, uh, I, I basically said that everybody comes back. Um, there might be some people on, uh, remote work, uh, work from home policies, that's a little bit different, but the general, in, in terms of those, um, who are home because of COVID, we're asking them all to come back. All right, um, all right, so, uh, if there's no other updates, we do have executive session. And, uh, I just got a track down on my laptop items. All right, I have acquisitions, confidential legal advice and personnel. So, uh, I will make a motion to end our work session, go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Uh, seconded by, I'm not sure, Councilman Martel. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Thank you. We're adjourned for all other purposes.